Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, November 12, 2019 at 6:35 PM and ask for a long haul.
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Ms. Feige?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you.
And ask if there are any particular comments. And now I will ask for approval of minutes of October 15, 2019, and ask for a second. All in favor? All right. I will turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Our first item is a demonstration of our Board Docs software. As you know, Board Docs is a management system specifically assigned for board meetings and board communication. And several weeks ago, we sent to the Board an opportunity to demo Board Docs. Our desire is to roll it out in January, but we wanted to do a demonstration tonight and then allow you again the opportunity on your own to kind of go in and try to navigate it. This evening is just a viewing demonstration. Joining us will be Kristin Forsberg, Assistant Vice-
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Okay. Assistant for Board Docs, and this information is for discussion only at this point. It is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Goal Four and Board Policy Two Colon One Forty and Two Colon Two Twenty.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, check that pound.
Fifty-seven.
You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting.
Hello, Kristin. Do you hear us?
Hello. I can hear you all just fine. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, coming through loud and clear. And you are, you're, you should be able to share your screen with us and we should be able to see it up projected.
I have just done that. Let me know if that comes through.
Yes, we're good.
All right. So are you ready to go ahead and dive in?
Yes. Good evening.
Great. Well, thank you guys for letting me present to you guys tonight. Kristin Forsberg here at Board Docs. What I thought we'd do first is take a quick look at the public facing side and then we can take a look of what your experience would be like as a board member. So I have Triad Community School site pulled up. This is where you would be taken from their website, so where you currently post links for your agendas, minutes, goals. It would simply link to your Board Docs site. So one-time posting of that link and always going to have the most up-to-date information for you as a board and for the public. And so we can click into their meeting. Let's go to a regular board meeting. And view the agenda. The agenda will always be on the left with the details to the right. That way, you're never losing track of where you are in the meeting. And you could click through those items or click into a particular item. You'll also notice here that votes can be entered. That will not only stamp on the bottom of your agenda item, but also automatically pull those details into your minutes. So we can click through some of these various items. And back on our Meetings tab, once the minutes have been released, you can view those right here as well. The other sections you'll see here, you have an area for policies. So we could click right in to a particular policy or even do a keyword search. It's not only searching through the title, but also the text body of those policies. And finally, you have a library. It is up to you what you keep here, any other documentation the board or public needs access to that's not directly linked to an agenda. This is also where you'll see the option for goals. We saw those featured on their homepage as well. And with the goals, those can be linked directly to relevant agenda items to track progress. And so if we wanted to get more details on one of these items, I could simply click in and navigate there. And you can also navigate right from the agenda item back to a particular goal. The final thing I'll note on the public side is you can search within each section, but you also have a system-wide search. And you could narrow that down. Maybe you know what you're searching for in the attachment or in the minutes. I'm doing a very generic search here, so of course if you remember a couple words of a resolution or what vendor you're working with, you can narrow that down. And we can go preview these items here. And once you find the item that you were looking for, you can also navigate there. So that is the quick overview of the public side. I hope it's to make it easy to remain in compliance with open meeting laws. We do ensure the public framework of ADA compliant. If someone helps enhance your public transparency. The next thing we'll take a look at is the backend. And then I'll let you guys ask questions after that. So here you'll see I have a login. When your materials are published, you'll actually get an email from Board Docs letting you know that your documents are available. And in that email, you'll have a link to your Board Docs site. So you can click that and then go ahead and log in. And you can have your logo here or a picture of your board as well as have all the relevant information. And so I'm going to click right into my meeting. What you'll see here is other than viewing the agenda, you again have those minutes as well as the option to add a video. So I'm going to go ahead and view our agenda. And on the backend, you'll also see that we have content levels. And so the purpose for that is if there's any additional detail, perhaps for closed session, that you'll have access to that as a board member, but the public just see relevant content for their consumption. And again, you can click through these items. Maybe I have a note on this item while I'm reviewing the materials in advance of the meeting. I can go add those. That's only visible to that individual user. And so you'll see I've added some of your agenda items from a past meeting here and just showing you how that could be formatted. So the background, and if I want to review this document, a PDF just opens through Board Docs in another tab. It's not going to force you to use something like Adobe or another program. The other thing to note while you're viewing the agenda is whomever's taking the minutes has the ability to go in and take the role, take the votes. And as they click through items, you'll see this item just was highlighted. So those items will highlight so you know where you're supposed to be on the agenda as they click through. And I'll also show you, this is a little bit more on the backend, but I think this is an important feature to note, that you can actually enter your votes here. And I could select the mover and seconder as well as enter the votes. The other thing on the backend that you'll get access to, if you keep your policies here, the public will see your active policies, but you would also have a section for draft and retire. And finally, the search on the backend has an additional option for meta-search. If you're curious what policies other districts have, have changed or what vendors they're working with, you could actually search through that. And that's going to search through all of our current client's information. We do have over 100 districts in Illinois. You can search nationwide if you want, over 3,500 nationwide, but you could go in and actually preview those items too. What questions can I answer?
Any question?
I appreciate this presentation's exciting. Just go quick, what does retire mean in the context of what you just said?
Oh, for the policies, when you have a new policy that's updated, let's say I've recently changed this policy, I'm not going to have the permission to do it as a board member, but you'd see an edit button. You can change the status to retire and it'll force you to enter a date so that you have each iteration of your policy changes. And those will be in chronological order. So if you were in a legal situation or you need to see what the policy was at a particular time, you can easily go back and find that.
Okay, thank you. And this is Matt, by the way. The, you said something at the end there that was really exciting. I probably was told through an email a month ago, I didn't look at this test yet, the ability to research topics across hundreds of 3,500?
Yes, you can also, if you, if we were going down to a new initiative, we wanted to see what other districts had done, we could actually search those districts that are in Board Docs and see some of the work that they've done.
Super Google. Thank you.
Exactly.
That's all I have at the moment.
And I just want to add, she showed the link to the board goals. There's also a link to Strategic Plan. And so what we say is connected to, you can actually click on it to see which strategic plan priority area is connected with.
Yeah, and so you can have those divided up into board goals and then a section for strategic plan and have those linked accordingly.
Thank you. Hi, this is Gina. I was curious what you just said. You could search previous other boards to see like other districts to see what they've done? So if they have Board Docs, but if they don't have Board Docs, they won't, okay.
Cool, yeah, correct.
How many districts in the state of Illinois are in there?
There's about 120 in the state of Illinois. And then if you're curious about other states, there's about 3,500 nationwide, so you can search through those.
Thank you.
Actually, a question for Gail. Gail, does this make your job harder, easier, or the same in terms of updating our agendas and the part that you have to do in terms of adding things?
I think that once I go through the learning curve, it can be very beneficial.
Not quite the answer, but I will take it. Thank you.
Politician at the table.
So when is the plan for this to be in use?
The plan was to roll it out, start a second semester because we wanted to give the board still an opportunity to go into the link we sent you and play with it before we rolled something out fully. And the cost is $10,000 a year.
And who's responsible for uploading all the information?
There's a process to purge what we currently have and then moving forward. And if we ever decide to go out of Board Docs, then we can get all of that information back.
So who would-
That would be with Gail and IT.
I just have a question about, are there any other competing companies that do the same thing in terms of access? How do we choose to go with these guys?
Well, basically, we actually did look at them very cursory, and this company wasn't one that we actually had a connection with, actually, at Pood Adams had used it in a previous district, so.
My question was about the uploading of all the information or how that happens. So you say Gail and IT, so is that-
Because a lot of it is uploaded from what we currently have on our website.
Is that like a, is there like a pretty seamless digital process for that or is it pretty manual?
You know, we actually haven't had a conversation about what we would do. I mean, the option is we could, we could actually leave everything that's existing. The advantage is of moving it over is you get that free, you get that search capability. So it doesn't have to happen like immediately everything's got to go there. We can actually start by taking, going forward and moving the current items into that and then over a period of time, determine how much of that we wanted to move over. Now certainly on our existing website, you only have the current year that's present. Then you actually have to go to other screens to get previous years. We could leave that same structure in place. It's really a decision we would make depending upon what sort of capability we'd want to enable. Does that make sense?
Totally. I just, I just keep thinking about Gail, like Saracen, and I'm thinking, is, I would hope that it would make life easier for Gail, that we would have this system in place. So I just, I'm curious, like I just know that there's already a lot on the plate of the person who does that piece, so I'm just mindful of how much is required for, you know.
Just, I'm just going to speak from previous experience. It makes the minutes a lot easier because most of it's done by the time the meeting is over. I agree with Gail, there's a learning curve on, and that's with anything for the uploading and what that looks like. Having done it before, it, it was not a major impact on the district and how that was done because like I said, we just kind of gradually transitioned things over. It's just getting accustomed to the system, which is relatively easy as well. But, you know, I can't sit here and tell you it's not going to be anything on Gail because there is a learning curve.
I would think that Gail's role, especially in the transitioning, is more of a quality control role than anything else. I don't see Gail having to take 5,000 PDFs and upload-
And upload herself.
Well, we'll figure that out.
Something to note for everyone in terms of the training, you all are in a fortunate position in that we've actually recently moved our training to be remote, but because I've been speaking with you all since long before that, you're grandfathered in to the onsite training. And so we actually send somebody in person, most of that time is spent with Gail and any other staff members involved in getting the agenda together. And then we also try to schedule that around a board meeting or work session so that we can train you all. And almost all of our trainers are former educators, they're the former superintendent, former technology department, former board secretary, that all use Board Docs in their districts. And so they're very good at what they do in terms of making that transition as seamless as possible.
No questions tonight? And all the culture, climate, and behavior stuff would go up like any of the other agendas, all of the stuff that's on the website would be also in the same Board Docs place.
And with the public facing side of this, how does that, I guess, what's the learning for the community in terms of now we have our website? How would it, would it sit on our website? How would people know to-
Yeah, I think it would sit in the same exact spot. So the link you would then click to go to agendas and minutes instead of going to that page that you currently see. It would drop you into this page, which we could customize to some degree to look very similar to what they're seeing now. The idea is, it's the basic format, obviously, here's the meeting date, and you click on the meeting date, and you get the agenda and everything else.
And just one- I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to show you guys real quick too. I pulled up Triad's site. They were, they were extra generous and put our logo up here for us, but you definitely don't have to do that. But they've gone in here and it just says, you know, when you click on their Agenda and Minutes tab, here's the access, and it takes you right to the public facing side of their website. And that upcoming meeting will always be the first one listed here. You can decide, they have goals, documents, policies, you can decide if you want that on the homepage or just the meeting. So it could just be the picture in the, the meeting right here for the public.
And then another question in terms of searching. So right now, if our webpage search is, we'll be, to be generous, so if someone were searching for something that had to do with the board on the webpage, would it take them to the Board Docs information?
No, you'd have to be in the Board Docs system to be able to enable that.
So how would people know to do that? This is, I'm just thinking of, as you're talking about rolling this out next semester, the public facing side, that if you're going on our website to look for a policy, say.
Yeah, I think we have, let's, let me think about that. I'm going to talk to Chris because there might be a way we could, depending on a keyword capture something and redirect that.
I didn't, I'm, I'm sorry, the agenda. The way when you go to the webpage now and you see policies and stuff on the side, I did not envision that changing. What I, for me, what Board Docs does is makes our board meetings easier to navigate and, and conduct a meeting. It would not have to change the policies that are on the side, the other things that are listed on that left-hand side that are currently on the board page.
So, okay, that sounds a little different than what I was imagining in terms of the public facing side.
The public facing is for the board meetings. Am I, that's it?
So you would just click on that Agenda and Minutes?
No, I understand that. I'm just, in terms of where people access that information?
They would access in the same place. Like when we clicked on tonight's board meeting, they click on, it would take them to that.
And there's, I'm sorry, but there's an education component. I think we would say to folks somewhere, we'd have to educate them, to search for board information, click on this link first and then, and then go with the search capability.
So the big selling point here is that efficiency for communication with board in meetings and administration?
Some of your remarks that come to mind, and if you confirm their accuracy, whoever. One is I feel like this could be something that helps people in the public eventually be able to access information more easily and that'll reduce our staff time to respond to requests. I see Mike nodding his head, so that's great. And then also the ability to post our videos in the same spot where all this is helpful. Right now, I think we link, so it goes outside the website to a YouTube channel, so I think that's really beneficial. And then, and I think just generally, my question is, to what degree could this be something that enhances the public experience of the rest of the website? Is there an ability for this to either have a broader reach or to help inform other parts?
I don't know about the other parts. I know it from the board member aspect, but what it does do, it allows, correct me if I'm wrong, it allows someone who's at home to follow the board meeting in real time while it's happening. If the board meeting's going on, they can click on because they can see how it's progressing.
Will they see the video in real time? Or is it-
They should be able to, am I correct? Participate in the board meeting while it's happening.
Yeah, so the video's going to be a separate component, but there is an option for, they can see as items are voted on, that would stamp on the bottom of the agenda item. There's also a link you can provide that would show them what agenda your item, what agenda item you are on and the outcome of that vote if you choose to, to provide that. So there's a couple ways they absolutely can, can follow along, but that video is sort of a separate component where we just provide an integration.
Okay.
Okay.
I just need to follow the board meeting. So Kristin also asked, do districts do exactly that?
Do districts actually have the video along with your feature of being able to follow along?
Sorry, can you repeat yourself?
Are there districts that actually do provide a video component, like a streaming video component, to go along with your ability to track what's going on within Board Docs?
I would say most districts are adding the video later. There are some that do a live stream and provide that. I wouldn't say they're using it in tandem with our sort of follow-along option unless they're streaming through a company called Swackett that we integrate with. That's sort of a separate component. But no, it's not typically used together.
If I may, at this point, recommend that we, I'd like to know what that would mean financially to do that and, and have us make the choices of board whether to do that. I feel like that would be really valuable. The moment something ends, it's like you're driving a car off the parking lot. The value of that information, the likelihood of people accessing it goes down and that diminishes our desire for transparency and connection. So we'll just make that request and see what that would, but if that's right, you would, checking.
It would be the consensus, the board is interested in-
Exploring those, yeah.
Anybody? I see Sarah and Gina nodding. I don't have any issues. So that's for, so that's-
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? I would be curious the board to, um, play with it.
The question of whether we load history seems like it's an open question, right? And so I, I don't know. I mean, I, being able to search prior agendas and especially in recurring events like what last year, what did we do on this, to me is, is a small value. It's a value, not a big thing.
See, I would have the opposite because I have gone through and tried to remember when the first time you talked about something is. So I would, I don't know.
Well, let's, let's take a look. Let me talk to Kristin about what that's going to take and how easy it's going to be and that we may make a determination, you know, do the first couple of years first and then over time go backwards. Well, let's, let's check it out.
But right now, the, the plan is just moving forward, not prior.
Yeah, we really haven't gotten into the implementation details. I think we want to, we want to load some history. I think that would make perfect sense. But how far back is the question? And how much time?
And does that cost what?
It does, it changes the cost.
I think we're doing the work. Is that correct, Kristin?
Yes, there are some documents, for example, policies that we do import at no additional charge. In terms of the path documentation, that's typically done by the client. I will say in a library, you can drop in a lot of documents at once or you can create a section in your meetings. I'm showing you guys sort of an easy example. This is a district that was not signed up in 2016, 2017, and they, they just created basically an agenda where they dropped in each PDF. And since they're already PDF, they're searchable still. That's a really quick way to go in and archive your documents for the last few years.
That would be, that would be a pretty straightforward way to do it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Kristin.
Thank you, guys, for your time. If there's any further questions that pop up, you all have my contact information, so feel free to send those my way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
We don't have any items under instruction, so I'm going to move to the finance section. And the first presentation is the five-year projection. As you know, the five-year projection provides an indication of how the district will perform financially over the next five years. So we're bringing that presentation tonight. We've attached some materials that you received in your board packet. Tonight, this is for a discussion.
Tonight, this is for a discussion, and this is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and Board Policy Four, Call and Twin.
Good evening.
Good evening, that's good.
It's nice.
What did that last? You were jazz waiting. So what we've done is we've gone through a five-year projection, and what we were looking to do is, the best scenario where we could show that we have a balanced budget and also have, stay within our fund balance percentage. Some of the assumptions that we made, we had the Community Finance Advisory Committee also look through our projections and also our levy, and they were, had approved the, this at the November 5th, 2019 meeting. This also includes our estimated levy to be approved in December of 19, and assumptions and limitations are detailed at the end. So what we looked at is, we looked at doing the projection with and without Project Two. We have Project One and the first one, and if you look at line, oh, let's see, the one that's a surplus deficit before construction. This is the one that we were looking at, because we were only trying to take expenditures and see where our expenditures were landing prior to us having anything in for Project One, because Project One was spending down fund balance. So we thought that that would be a good way to take a look and see what our balances actually were. And we were able to balance the budget all the way up until 24, 25, but considering the fact, let's say, $98 million budget there, that $178,000 is not that far off. The, the, the things that we were looking at is the fact that we have the TIF, the two TIFs will be going on this year. We have new property, we have the 1.9%, and then we also talked about the Property Tax Relief Grant. And also, too, one other small thing is the fact that when we looked at it, the fund balance is at 77%.
So can you be, repeat and be really clear about what assumptions get us to this so-called balance number?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So the assumptions we took into it is that we would keep the, at one point, we were gonna take the CPI at 1.9%. We have the two TIFs that are going off in a park that we would be taking onto our books. We would have new property that we take all the time. And then also, too, the Property Tax Relief Grant. We had met the obligations that the state had required, that we had abated back for this year. So you don't have to abate back for next year. Part of this is also, too, the Property Tax Relief Grant is in our evidence-based funding. It's not part of the taxes. It is in the evidence-based funding. So that is why we do not levy it back. And again, this made the most sense to have a balanced budget.
So under this assumption, what are, what did we levy last year, and what would we levy next year?
So this year, what we, last year, what we levied, levied 68 million, and what we did is abate back 5.8, which left us down to about 61 million. So this year, what we will be doing is, this year, for next year, we would be actually going back to the original amount we had for our levy, which was $68 million. This would be our building block that we would start with.
And then you would get new growth on top of that, or that includes new growth?
Correct.
So what would the total levy be?
The total levy would be, um... Our total levy, our total levy that we would be looking at would be, um, sorry, I have to flip my glasses up and down. So our revenues then would have done, oh God, I have to think. I have to, I have to look at that number. I don't have the total number in front of me. I just have the total revenues is what I have. I would have the levy for us for the next time.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a feel for what the impact on the taxpayer would be from last year to this year.
The impact, I got a $400,000 home, you mean something?
No, just the total number.
The total number. Just give me a second.
But this, this scenario requires us to take the full CPI that we're allowed to. It requires us to take back essentially what we abated last year in terms of Property Tax Relief Grant, and we get additional revenue from the TIF.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all required to balance our budget out between now and 2025. Thank you.
Yeah, I had asked a question, but it probably wasn't asked clearly enough. But I've asked it a few times, which is, what, it's not evident in here. What is the overall rate of expense growth on a year-to-year basis? Because it's not up there.
Okay, that was, that was part of what I had sent, I responded to your question. I think we sent that as an attachment?
I didn't. But I got an attachment, but it didn't, it, it, was it like this?
Yes.
Okay.
And part of, part of the reason, too, is showing the, the rate of growth.
But this is, this is all the pieces.
Correct.
I didn't, okay. What is the overall, if you take up there and we look at?
Salaries, benefits.
Subtotal of expenditures, that line. What is the rate year-to-year of expense growth, and what's the compounded rate over the course of this period in time? And what has it been historically? So the question was meant to be that overall number, because it's the aggregation of it all.
Correct. I agree. One thing, I think the reason we sent it separately, though, is also because we're also tied into, and I know we've talked about trying to keep our expenditures to CPI, but also keeping it at CPI, we are also bound to have our contracts that are above the CPI. So it's hard.
Right now, I'm just asking, what has, what is the projected annual rate of increase of overall non-capital expenditures? It's up, the data's up there, but that percentage number, we have percentages of components, but we don't have percentages of the total number, which to me is a starting number versus the detail. I had to.
So you're just looking for the 87, or you're looking at the, let me just make sure, the total expenditure is the $100,000 that you're talking about, $100,545? Is that one? Or are you talking about when we get down to the bottom line of where we're at the projected? So because you wanted an overall percentage?
Right there. That line.
Right.
Right, what is the percentage for each, as we go through? What's the rate of expenditure growth in the, in the forward look?
Okay.
Okay? And then, because it bounces around a little bit, what is it, you know, what's the compounded rate during that period? And then what has it been for a look-back period that would be the four or five years back?
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, I could go ahead, and I can project that, and I could take a look and get back to you with an answer on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, if I could just, and there's percentage increase numbers for all the other sub-items, but it's, so there's a blank, so I think it's just the fill in those blanks, right? Tom, let's be looking.
Right, that's what he's looking for.
Might be an invisible angle.
Okay.
That's not a problem. We could do, I could do that. That's not a problem.
And, um, and so, when would, is, when are, we're looking at the, maybe December?
December, it has to be approved.
So we would hope to have this?
Oh, I can, I can have it for the next board meeting, but not a problem.
And I have a question about the, the abatement. So with the tax relief grant, we get that?
In our evidence-based funding, yes.
Supposedly.
Correct, correct.
Well, but what you're saying is that we won't be offsetting after this year?
Correct.
We had initially said we would come back and ask the board each year, but in order to maintain the balanced budget through 2025, is why we're saying not to give that abated back.
Correct.
I have a question about, what is the amount of increased revenue that we would be able to gather from the experiment tips?
It was, it's approximately 3.3 million, but it's in offset, if you look at the offset of what we've been receiving from the TIF, it's around $800,000.
So it's $800,000 in net increase over what we most recently received?
Correct, right. Because it, like I said, it's approximately 3.3 million, but we've also been receiving about 2.4, you know, somewhere in that range. So the offset would be about $800,000. So this is just showing that if we had the fund balance without Project Two, it's just showing how we would go along, and we would be at the expenditures of 75%, the expenditures of 25%, and the expenditures of 40. This is for the target that we were looking at, is to keep us in target of the 25% to 75%. The others that we're looking at is, we're also looking at a 40% that the state has been recommending.
So just for clarity, Project Two is estimated at about $62 million? And the fund balance that we're projecting to have is about $70 million?
This is without Project?
No, without Project Two. So, so that would leave us with less than $10 million if, without some other form of capital community?
Correct, which we, which more than likely be, we would probably have to go to debt or contributions.
Where are defining Project Two, how? Is that, I'm just trying to clarify, because we've also talked about the, the fundraising that's happened, that's more of Project Two. That's, that's Project Two.
And that would be the athletic spaces, if you're concerned, we, dance studios, and some more classrooms, spaces.
And the natter.
And the natter.
And we're only taking Project Two as what it's been, what it looks like now, what Project Two would be?
I, I think it would be, I don't know how we do this, but it, for me, it gets a little confusing with talking about Project Two, we've had presentations about the fundraising piece that will offset some portion or all, I mean, it hasn't been determined, so it's hard to, I think defining what we mean by Project Two, some aspect somewhere would be helpful to talk about the other funding possibilities for that.
And this is, this is the five-year projection with Project Two. And again, they're just making the assumptions that it would start in '24, which I believe Mike has the design work?
Yes.
And then it would actually start, the actual construction would then start in '25. And we can see the difference more in our fund balance and also to the, in '25, when we're now down to 42%. And I'll put the percentages in there, too, and let you know, Dr. Lovey. Any questions?
Yeah, well, so, you know, I think it's nice to be able to have a five-year projection model to at least be looking at, which we've been asking for. I, I think we have a challenge, which is that it's a dynamic time, and so, five years to show a projec, well, the second comment is that, you know, districts, when you go beyond five years, it gets kind of iffy, right? And then you could say a 10-year model. But the reality is, in this model, year five, we're, you know, beginning part of another major thing and just dropping it off. So it's kind of an incomplete story that would be better cast by looking to the end of the story. So I don't know how we do that, I, you know, we, but to me, it's important because it's incomplete.
So we can put two or three more years on there, then?
I've just been thinking, I know that Ralph's not here, but I know he would say a five and a 10-year, because he said it numerous times, about five and 10-years. I think if we're really looking at the full scope of that Project Two, it feels like really having that next five years would be beneficial.
So should we add then Project Three? Because that would come right behind it, then?
I would think that if we know that these, if, if we know that this is what we're looking at, it would seem beneficial to have the longer view in our, as we're making these early-on decisions, than have a shorter view. That's just my opinion.
And then you want to, then you want that in there, too, then, at that point? Or we're gonna show that?
Yeah. And we have to add?
Yes, no, absolutely.
I, I think it's important that we get the five-year, you know, the assumptions and the cadence that we feel comfortable with, and then, and then adding another, you know, period where you have a little less certainty, but at least you've got a foundation to build on. So I think it's important that we, we get the five-year piece, yeah.
Okay.
I just have a more of a process question related to the, the Community Finance Advisory Committee?
Okay.
And how, just trying to understand the role that that committee is playing with input to this, getting these, this information in terms of the recognition.
We've been showing that the exact same things that you're seeing, but they're even seeing longer presentations explaining what we're coming with, up with the numbers. And then, we've actually, we had actually showed them, I think, approximately seven different scenarios. One of them had been a very conservative, or I should say, two of them probably have been a very conservative one, where we showed property tax raises and, what else is it? And pension shift. We were talking about the pension shift. So if there's a property tax raise, you said probably right behind it, they'll get the schools prepared for it, we give you a property tax raise, then right behind that, well, then you can afford to pay for the pension shift then coming down. So that's how we sort of looked at it.
So, given all of that, how did we land here? I guess I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
I, the way I believe that they landed here is the fact that it wasn't with Project Two, they were looking at Project One, and they looked at it, that we were balanced. And it was also the fact that we were staying within the fund balance of what the policy had said.
So I, I think what Dr. Lovey said, are they in agreement with what?
Yes. And that was a vote that they, they took when they were there.
It did, there's a, it seemed like it was not unanimous. What was the, the vote? Was it with a for and against?
You had three, four, you had one for two, which was now taking the CPI, and then you had one that sort of abstained from it, because he said he would, he could see both sides of one and two.
Like a true economist, too, yeah. So, so the middle one you mentioned, one said they would, I think quite, they said not, they did not favor going for CPI?
Correct.
They said what, zero?
Yes.
They self-imposed property tax crease? Is my way of, okay.
Any other questions before you?
Well, this is showing the exact same thing that with the, with the Project Two in here, and we're just showing exactly the same thing. So you could see in the last year how we would have to, as we've been talked about, we would have to figure out some sort of funding, whether it be debt or contributions at that point to finish. to finish paying for this project.
That blue bar is then the minimum you could move the fund balance to? So you, oh, you haven't taken out, how much money have you taken out of there for Project Two? About?
Twenty, twenty, I believe, it's twenty. Yeah, 25 altogether because you have, you have three and, uh, three million and then you have 22. So together it's about 25.5 million.
So the rest would have to be funded some other way?
Correct. Right.
Which is 38 million?
Correct, yes.
I should mention that that's based upon the assumptions made and the estimates made by the majority. So that would have to be allocated, not say that whatever, that's 62, 65 million, yeah.
And just if you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, just to be technical, I mean, because when we say balanced, if you look at the line that has the surplus before.
Construction.
There. That, that's kind of the, the change year over year. So what you do see is a number that's going from 1.8 positive to 600 to 200 negative. So that has a, a downward slope. To come to Craig's point, if you look at the next page just for a moment. This says, as I read it, that in 2024, '25, we would be at the bottom of our fund balance.
Exactly, yes.
And we would be in a slight deficits, a deficit spending mode. If you're balanced, I don't buy. It says we are in a downward slope. So, um, that's where the end of this movie is and where additional chapters would be beneficial.
Part, part of it is too, we are, we are committed to, um, looking at our expenses. That is something that we have been brought forward into our executive cabinet that we are looking at every week and going over what we could do for our expenses to control them and make sure we're in line. We're trying to stay in line with CPI or at least with the, um, expense growth being equal to or below what our revenue is. So these were just the assumptions, they're just, um, I'm not going to read them all to you, but these were the assumptions we made when we were building this. And again, the assumption limitations, we did not, we did not put in the property tax freeze that could possibly happen, um, the TRS shift, um, Project Two, except for the one slide. And because there's been no official plans for Project Two, that's, that's the other thing. We also know that there would be some capital campaign donations that we're not sure of a dollar amount. That was not taken into fact of this because we were more or less looking to where would we truly fall before debt? And then Project Two begins in '24 with construction in '25.
I think for me, as I'm hearing about, you know, the conversations about, um, looking at our expenses and where, how we keep those in line, um, you know, 85, whatever percent of our, um, budget is human resources.
Exactly.
So I'm just curious as to how, I mean, you know, I know in the last year, looking at like field trips and things like that and, um, snacks, but at some point we gotta go to, you know, how to talk about the bigger, uh, issues because that drives most of our.
We just thought that those conversations as well, um, really, really evaluating positions as people leave. How we can really not fill a position, looking at, um, course scheduling, the number of FTEs we need, bringing people in at a lower pay rate and then at points in time not filling positions.
Correct.
Because you're right, the biggest bulk of the budget is in the example.
Exactly.
And never to, you know, um, decrease our will of service. Just how, what, you know, being apprised as we're looking at this, how those things are affecting, you know, affecting the rationals that are going to that, they will be helpful.
Just for clarity, we're going to be looking at the state report, school report card next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because to me, that is, and, and actually, just to, the, the community, the finance, Community Finance Committee, that's, that was a, a point raised, which is they, you know, haven't had that, that view of how, what are we doing in terms of achieving in, in our students' goals? And then how does that relate to, you know, the expenditure side? So I look forward to being on the phone and hearing fragments of that discussion.
But it's not going to end like we did, Kristin earlier, so you'll hear better. But I think that we have to have conversations that are overall like that because it's not, it's all tied together. So I, it would be helpful to be able to talk about the, you know, cost per pupil with our, salaries and benefits, educational goals with our projection and things.
Can I make one more comment? I want to put, add some color for the Community Finance Committee. So the Community Finance Committee has, has looked at this. We have a rare, a really good set of people who have looked at it. And I think, um, you know, they looked at this issue and they, I think they came to this conclusion overall, obviously a little dissent, which was if this is our spending, then the only, right, and Cindy hasn't done the numbers, but that number that Tom was asking for is about 3.3%. If you just do the numbers of the, up there. I have a laptop here, so it wasn't that hard. So that's about 3.3%. Our growth of CPI in the equation is 1.9%. That delta is being masked by getting the tax abatement and the TIF. So just like the fund balance, we're able to kick the can because we've been, we were able to get these differences. But the reality is, is underlying expense grows, grown at 3.3% and our maximum levy is 1.9. That's the situation and the only way to address it is to address our spending.
And, and part of that is also too, because we are also tied to the contracts. That's where, that's where that comes in, just what you're talking.
Contracts tie us to rate.
Right, and that rate has, as we can see, that's what the rate is.
They don't tie us to FTE.
No, it doesn't tie you to FTE, but it's tying us to rate, right? Correct, right. So rate, that is FTE, that is something we said that we were going to address, like possibly not replacing positions when people leave. But at the same time too, right now, this is where we're at with the contracts too. So that would be something when the contracts are renewed again, what are we looking at in percentages?
And, and I guess one of the things that, that we talked about earlier this week or maybe the end of last week was really getting a handle on, understanding what it, let's say our maximum amount of expense, expense growth is 1.9%. What does that mean? I mean, what does it mean in terms of FTE? I mean, just what does it mean? And, and not that I'm saying we should go there, but I need to understand what that curve looks like so that we can start to understand the magnitude of the decisions that we have to make. Until we produce that curve, I, I can't, I can't articulate what the magnitude of that decision, of those decisions mean. So for us to, from my perspective, to put out a forecast and, and be, and try to make levy decisions off of a forecast that embeds our current expenses. And, and I, the, the only answer if I embed my current expenses is, is tax, right? But that's not acceptable from my point of view. So we need to have this other perspective.
And Craig, can I, for clarification for myself and I, and the broader community, when we're saying FTE, who are you referring to?
Employees.
Current. Current employees or future employees?
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure, because we, we're just talking about, you know, the, um, the state report card. And I just want to make sure that when you're saying FTE, that.
Right.
We're making this up, we're talking about the whole.
That, that if our students aren't growing, our students are flat, that's all flat. I, I understand, like I said, I'm not advocating anything except.
I just want to clarify that just to bring the conversation full circle to mention that we were clear, what we knew by.
You know, I'll throw in a third log on the fire. And, and Craig had just talked about in terms of our expenses and their spending. But on the revenue side, it's not a foregone conclusion that any tax body needs to take the CPI or to capture the TIF funds that are released. And so, uh, there's a lot of strain in the community. A lot of people for seven years that have been on boards in this town every year and are refraining to, you know, slow down the rate of growth. And so I see the expiration of the TIF as an opportunity to look at, we've lived without this money, the $800,000 gap to this point. And I know we've made assumptions in the past, but that's part of, I think what Craig has been touching on is that these assumptions we're making are, are inherently driving us towards this, this gap that, and it's being masked by some of these stopgap Band-Aids, you know, like the abatement we got last year. And so, um, so I just think, you know, there's two parts of the equation, I guess I want to point out. And you might know what I'm going to do in-depth discussion tonight, but I think it's important for us to, for me anyway, to consider, as someone on the CFAC apparently considered, is CPI something that we automatically go for? I'm not proposing we don't, but I think it's just a question, these fundamental, um, data points.
So just for the purpose of the administration and, and to ensure that we're all communicating the same way, can we just have a summation of the, um, the assumptions that are required? Um, G D, you talked about and Tom adding the next five years and being able to reflect Project Two and Project Three where those fall. We also talked about how this ties in with expenditures and looking at, um, the FTEs and how that would be, how we're looking at reducing spending and having that as a part of the scenario.
Can I, can I just change?
Sure, you can change.
Reducing the rate of expense growth. We're, I, I think the words we use, at CPI, at 1.9%, that means next year we'll spend a million and a half dollars more, not less, than the prior year. So it's, that's lower than if it were 3.3%. But people use the word, they hear cut or reduce. It's, you're reducing something that's growing at this rate to something that grows at this rate.
And that's, thank you.
Okay.
That is what we need to be, all talking in the same language though. So, um, and if there's any other.
Just, I just wanted to, just Craig to ask, you know, all the pieces, but just as we get, look at the data and it really is more getting us to where we are when we do the five years to 10 years, the debt thing will come into play. But the fact is, as a district, we were spending 2.4 million? Is that about right? Per year in debt for a long period of time and that fell off in the last few years. So again, as, as Craig, you know, we talk about how we think we're balancing things, that's another piece to the puzzle is we're paying, we're taking money we used to spend for debt and we.
Use it for something else, yeah. They had those with that. Okay. And so is this something that Craig will happen, some of these conversations will happen in the Community Finance Advisory Committee?
Yes. Yeah, this will definitely, yes, this will definitely be conversations because we're starting in January, talking about the budget and we're going to have scenarios and everything like that. And comparisons to other districts, what they're doing too.
Okay. So one of the things that makes me very nervous about looking at projections is this assumption we're making that the TRS, um, Pettenburne is going to stay in the state and that flipped to us. And I, I mean, if, if that changes, this is completely out the window then and we're in a very, very different position. So I would love to see some sort of at least contingency planning to see what that would look like if that did change. Because I know there are other districts out there that are doing that, right? Preparing for that eventuality, so I think that's what it is. Um, especially for looking at 10 years, I think that's a very long time to be making that assumption for.
And Sarah, that, I, I, I realize as we look at the assumptions in the five-year model right now, it's not in there.
Correct.
As a board or as a district, as we looked at assumptions over, you know, the last five years when, when the fund balance was growing and, and maybe our projection model was coming, uh, short, you know, where we were growing fund balance, there were assumptions of some, um, shift of pension that was, that was in. So we've, we've, we've had that in the model in the past. And it, in some ways, it, it needs to be an option, but in some ways it hurts us because it's becomes overly conservative and such.
I'm just saying we should probably.
Right, as an option, is it?
Yeah, and, and the first scenario is that I had shown the CFAC, that's what I did have in there. I did have that because I put in the property tax reason just so it would probably shift to the pension, uh, pension shift.
I also realized that 10 years is a long time for assumptions and that a lot, a lot of things could change, especially since we're moving into an election year.
Correct.
What, I, I still feel that having that additional longer-term breakdown with some of the contingencies is really useful, is some information to have.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure I captured, I have additional five years. I have expenditures and FTE, reducing, reducing the rate of expense growth and pension shift. Does this, something?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, you're welcome, thank you.
The next item is the presentation of the estimated tax levy.
I was going to say a lot of that.
My bad, my bad.
This is the compliance with Illinois School Code 35 ILCS. And, um, this is, the presentation is in compliance with Priority Four, the teacher plan and board policy for poll of 20, for poll of 20, and for poll of 150. And it is recommended that, um, we present to you the estimated tax levy that may be moved forward for approval at the November 21st Board of Education meeting.
So, so this was just the timeline that we showed, you guys have seen this before. It's just a timeline of where we have to have everything done and what we need to. Um, if we have to do, um, truth in taxation, we have to make sure it's submitted to the paper. But normally we have done that, whether we've met the 4.0 or for over the 5%. Thank you. So the one thing, the one thing that I always look at, you know, I like to look at the slide is this district has given back to the community. And when we look at how much money we have actually left, um, it's 46 million dollars that we have, um, we have taken less of, that we were entitled to. So I think that, I think the district has done a great job of, um, giving back to the community. And part of this is when we're looking at this now, we're also looking at the fact that there's a lot of projects coming through that we're looking at to do. So, um, the, our balance, like I said, the reason we did our levy the way we did it is just because we were also taking into consideration a lot of the construction. The components of this, this is, this is going to be very similar to what you've already heard. We have the 1.9 CPI, no increase to the taxpayers would be for the, um, 120 million expiring TIFs, that's the two TIFs, and, uh, 3.8 million new property, a total extension of 73.1 million. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you answer the question?
I just said that, I just, you probably heard it. I was looking for it.
So, under that, the taxpayers were levied 60, what, this year, 60?
There were, our levy, once we did the abatement, was 61 million.
They paid, there's 61 and we're requesting 73.
Correct. And that is due to the TIF, you have the one time to take that, you take it or you don't, and you lose it if you don't. It's going back to this 68 million, that's the way this county had sent it to everybody is, it was, you went back to your original amount from last year that you were asking in your levy. They didn't do it with the abatement. Normally, the abatement's on there, but because this was a property tax relief grant, they moved it back to the original amount. And then the new property of 3.8 million, which is about what we, what we look at for new property every year. This is the projected total revenues versus expenses. And when we were just looking at this, the slide was just brought in just to see exactly where we would be, where we were spending. One is taking, the red is not taking CPI, and the green is taking, is taking the CPI, and taking everything on it. This one here is with project two, so I think this is the one that makes the most impact, right here, is the fact that we can see where in '25, this is where we would need to, well before '25, but actually go to debt or use some of the contributions that we were receiving from the campaign. So, part of this is, we're trying to align expenditures to CPI. Again, we're very committed to trying to keep our expenditures down, looking at the ways that we can actually reduce costs here, and not be expending past what our actual revenue growth is, whether it's something new or whether it's we're going to stay to CPI. That is something we have definitely been looking at. Last year, we did take the attempt of looking at, what can we cut, and with some of the smaller stuff that we were cutting, but at this point in time, we realized that it has to be more of the major stuff that we're looking at, and how will we do that without reducing anything that we're offering to our students? And that's it.
So, and maybe I was looking at an older document, if you go to the cover, oh, right there, down, stop. Okay. I have issue, as raised, with the first paragraph and the incompleteness of that statement. It gets captured in the graph, but in terms of the words, what it states is the board specified that the funding plan should include annual tax levies equal to CPI, which is the maximal level. And my issue is, that's half of the statement that was made. The other half is, assuming expenses are controlled within CPI. That, those two in my mind go together, and just putting this as a document says, the board is authorizing a tax to the max strategy. But that, and I'm referring back to that meeting in the, when we had this discussion, that's my recall, and I offer that up, I mean, that's the full picture, and as it's presented here, in my mind, it's incomplete. Does anyone else have memory?
So, is there a request that, is there a way to do, talk about this document?
Yeah, I mean, I think she covered it, you had some things, but I would put, write it with that, to put that sentence there, that just says, the board authorized taxing to the max, period. And it was not a, it was a B-side to that story, and it needs, they need to be glued at the hip.
Because, yes, the text does have to reflect our graph, because not everybody's going to just...
Because if that doesn't occur, it's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah.
And then we'll have to choose a different game for it.
And I have to say, and this is my issue to start with, with the tax relief grant, and I have to go back to look at how we talked about it last year, but having that be an abatement, and, but only for one year, but we get it every year.
Correct.
I just, it feels a little off to me that that's how we, that we're applying for a tax relief grant, but then also taxing it, when we get that money, which was supposed to be an offset.
No, that does not get taxed, that money's not being taxed.
No, no, I'm saying that we're also asking, you know, in terms of the levy that we're asking for additional. And the first year that we did it, it was like, oh, this is great, and we can, you know, do this abatement. And so, I'm just, I'm struggling with that, and I just have to review how we talked about this when we were first applying.
Right, I think what we, if you have any seriously, we said we would come back in December and ask the board to abate again. But looking at where we are, and moving forward, that was no longer an option.
Correct. I think, and the other thing that I think I remember too, is that we said we would address the abatement every year with us, as long as we were receiving it, we would always address it.
And that's what I feel like we're not doing. So, I do...
Want to review it?
That we're having that conversation and not just because we had the projection and the assumptions that it kind of, it was in there as part of the assumption, but was not part of the discussion, which is what we said we would do.
I think another piece I should probably, others be thinking about is, I'm not sure how long that wording in statute is going to remain, because clearly that wasn't the legislative intent. I don't know, Gina knows, I'm sure Ralph would if he were here, but my understanding is legislators are looking at trying to fix that, because clearly they meant for taxes to be abated annually, right, and not just have this like windfall based upon a year's abatement. So, I'm not sure we can rely on that assumption for much longer.
I think, you know, you're kind of about the shift in pension, I think that piece there is, you know, in terms of a variable that's suspect to change, probability standpoint is, you know, equal to or higher than a pension shift, just because of the uncertainty of that. And it is called a property tax relief grant.
Yeah, and that's, so, it sounds as though legislative update would be helpful for our body as well.
So, just so I'm clear, I remember last year that was an astonishing fact, so that we could do a one-time decision, one-time expense of two and a half million dollars, was it?
5.3.
5.3, but then we got back...
3.7.
3.7. And so, we were to be able to pay taxes. So, as of now, is it that we will get that roughly 3.7 again this year?
We received it this year. We're receiving it every month in our evidence-based funding.
So, we've been getting it, so that's, that's, I'm going on a monthly basis. Okay. And so, it sounds like it's like a moral slash spirit of the legislation question that I think, Tom, you broached in terms of the name of it, right, so if we don't continue to, so, anyway, okay. So, you know, when would, so when would we be discussing this in more depth, or is this the discussion?
This would have to be the discussion, because next week, or next time we meet for the board, I have to have just a tentative levy that I could publish.
Can we get a, can we get a legislative update on if this is going to be an ongoing piece? And I don't recall hearing it at my most recent board meeting for IEA, so I don't have that.
I think that has to be a part of our discussion here, where this, because putting this, well, it's actually two discussions. One is the, in terms of looking long-term, and putting that into our assumptions. The other piece is being, you know, true to how we said we would talk about this. And I am struggling with how we said we would look at this grant, and how with abatement, and that we would review it and maybe, you know, the fact that it's coming as a tail end, I think it does, it is worthy of discussion now, because this sounds like the only time we can talk about it.
I did contact the other schools that also have received this grant, and out of, I believe it was 28 of four that received this last year, correct me if I'm wrong, but 10 of them are actually keeping it. They're not going to abate back. And in a little bit of two, we were looking at the same thing, we were trying to see what is everybody else sort of doing, you know, because if we decided to try and keep it, you know, was that something we should do or not? But when we seen that they were doing it, we said, well, this is something that we would offer, because again, too, with all the construction projects we have coming up, this would also hold off actually having to do a referendum or going to debt sooner.
I'd like to hear from you. I'm struggling.
No, you're fine.
Well, I guess just, I have an opinion that this is just now part of our base, so I don't know that they would ever take it back. It's part of our funding, but I don't know. I mean, we have to get an update on that. But I've heard a couple times people say, or it's said in this discussion, is that, well, we don't have a choice, because to balance our budget, this is what we have to do. And I guess I would refute that. We do have a choice. We have a 65 or 70 million dollar fund balance that can absorb issues, it can absorb a deficit spending until we fix the problem. It can't absorb it very long, but it can absorb it.
I'm not looking, I guess, to look to fix expenditures. I was looking for future projects that we're doing. That's where I looked more at that, instead of, again, having to abate the money back, but then we're going to go to debt, or we would have to go to referendum. That's all I was, that's how we approached it.
So, a practical question, sorry. The paperwork to do an abatement is, there is paperwork to do that.
Correct.
Is there a deadline that you have to have that in by, or is it the same as the last?
No, that you can, I believe you could do that in December, yeah, we could do that in December, and then we'd bring it down. I think last year, we brought it down in January, is when we brought it down.
So, we could abate in December or January, and we don't have to file the paperwork for that until?
We filed in January last year.
You have to file in January.
Yeah, I, if we did something like that, I would want to do it ahead of time to make sure that I got the paperwork in.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a moment going forward to then.
So, I just want to understand some of the moving parts here, make sure that I'm tracking a few of them. One is, if we, let's say we go ahead with a certain amount of extension of our levy, and we will capture all the TIFs, and we'll say 1.9% of the CPI, and then we choose to abate a portion, or a certain amount of money, the advantage to that long-term, in terms of our overall revenue arc, is that our base is at that higher number, so that's the base that we operate from then forward. And so, so there's a way to maybe or take it either too, where we are providing immediate relief, and at the same time, be able to have a foundation that helps us sustain a balanced budget or something close to a balanced budget, versus, I guess, there's that scenario in my mind, versus if we say, you know, let's not take any of this additional TIF, $800,000 gap that we could take, because we want to provide tax relief for residents, and we won't do an abatement. Well, that scenario, long-term, that $800,000 compounded over time is millions and millions of dollars. Am I saying everything accurately here?
I think so, but so does the abatement, the abatement also. Because if you leave the money, it's not like the property tax relief grant, where this year you were able to go back to the amount that you actually levied. You're not going to be able to do that going forward, they would go back to whatever.
Oh, so, oh, so great, so future abatement. I know there's a way to do it for a few years, they have to pause, right? So, I guess, so, so I guess I'm just trying to think through an equation that would work, that would address these, you know, dueling needs. And so, we abated just last year, this past year we abated.
5.8, yes.
And before that, we did not abate the previous year, right?
There was no opportunity that you would do, because of the tax relief.
Right, so we could do it one more year, I believe, or is it, you can do it three years in a row?
That's CPI I think you're talking about.
Right.
You can only...
So, we're like five, six years ago is what the board did.
Right, that was CPI, that's not the tax relief. But that gets to why I, I think I'm struggling with this, is that the reason that when we had the opportunity with the tax relief grant was to provide tax relief. And if we're taking the tax relief grant and then not providing tax relief, I struggle with how we're calling it tax relief.
So, factoring it into the budget, when making that assumption that that is, and also, I mean, history along the board, you know, in prior years, the rationale of, well, we can get up to 2.9% or whatever it was, so let's take, you know, as much as we can get. And for me, it's always been, let's do what we need. And, you know, I think we have been kicking this can down the road, and it feels disingenuous to me to take a property tax relief grant and then not use it for that purpose. And that's just how it sits with me. That's, I've been sitting here trying to work through that, and it's not, it wasn't working, so.
And part of it, I struggle with it, I understand exactly what you're saying. Part of it is to, we've only, if we received anything in excess, it's been 1.7 million, so I would not do a 5.8 million dollar abatement back, because I would have to wait too much year to see that if I received it. But the other, the other side that I see is the fact that it actually flows through into my evidence-based funding, which now has changed my rate from what I would, actually would have received from general state aid, long ago what they called it, and now it's increased that, but now I'm not keeping it. I'm going to actually do it as a tax abatement back. Does that make, does that make sense?
It does, but the struggle for me is that that stake amount was never a large amount.
Correct.
So, we, you know...
We can do the math well enough to really know what's a responsible amount, in our view, what responsibility means. And so, I'm with you, Jackie, on, you know, keep to the spirit of that legislation, so that it's like there's the, what we have to do is what we should do, and those are, there is a delta, a gap in those things. And so, I appreciate your struggle.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Cindy, there was an option on the table, it's probably a month ago or so, which, which went like this, and correct me if I'm wrong, which was, we had sort of told the community that we would be taking our CPI, because we need, and because that's how we were controlling our expenses. All along, you know, we'd been contributing to the TIF and getting something back, so it made sense to take the TIF money back, because that was EAV growth, and it didn't impact any individual taxpayer. And from a property tax relief grant standpoint, that we could essentially not take the full 5.8 in abatement, but take 1.7, which made us essentially neutral to what we were getting back. So, that was the scenario we were talking about.
Correct.
Why did, why did you shift away from that scenario, went to here? Because when we looked at expenses, you felt you needed the whole amount back.
Correct. Right, because just in the one line, when we were showing just our expenditures and revenues, we were looking at where would we be as far as being balanced, and trying to, again, trying not to go to a referendum, or again, going to debt. We were just trying to push it out as far as we possibly could.
Okay. And the story we were, we had, that we were trying to tell there was that we were giving something back. I mean, we were taking some of the abate, the tax relief grant back to get to a flat line, but abating something back as an effort to be... To get to a flat line, but abating something back as an effort to be physically responsible.
Correct.
Okay, a taxpayer, from a taxpayer perspective, about trying to hold a line. That was the logic behind that.
Right. And, and part of it even is we looked at that, if we continued on with our expenditures, we would probably be in a deficit by 24, so meaning we had to go to debt probably between 22 and 23.
What I'm hearing you say, Cindy, is a question is about the property tax relief grant and it flowing through the evidence-based funding formula.
Yes.
And the challenge that that presents. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Or I guess what I'm needing is more understanding of how, how, how those two are connected and how that works in the process of what your question is.
So when I see the property tax relief grant, what I, what I actually seen was we were receiving 3.7 and they said, well, we'll put that into your base of your evidence-based funding. And that's how we're now receiving it. So we also received a, the evidence-based funding of the 2.3, 2.4 million. But on top of that now, now we're also receiving 3.8. The question in a little bit of where I have the struggle is when we're doing the evidence-based funding model, when do we ever show that we have abated this back? Because I don't see that we ever abate this back at any point in time either. So I don't see where we're showing anything that actually goes back to the community if you decide to abate money back. And that's a question I've asked a couple of times and I'm not really getting an answer on that. So that is something that I see because I don't, it's not really money we can say we're receiving if we're going to get, if we're going to abate it back. Because again, too, it's not flowing through taxes, it's flowing through evidence-based funding. Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you. That helps, that helps with the question. Now, I wish Ralph was here so we could provide some additional information on that since the EDF is his baby.
Yeah, I've been asking and asking and I'm not, I'm not really getting a straight answer and I wish he was here too to answer that question.
So what you say, you've been asking, is that, who is it that we're supposed to be asking?
I asked Rob about it and I also asked, I called the state and asked them about that. I asked Jason Hall exactly how does this look if we abate something back? Because again, I have an evidence-based dollar amount, but if I abate back, whoever sees that I'm abating this back through the evidence-based funding?
So just to clarify, it sounds like the dilemma that you're facing is that we're not getting credit from the state's vantage point, looking at how much they continue to disperse to us.
Exactly.
But I would just say that that's, as much as I appreciate that you're in the crosshairs of that, that the real relief that we are, or that I see is that we have provided the payment. And so that far overshadows the difficulty, not to diminish your, you know what I mean, but to say, okay, and that's the price we pay is like we get a little bit of a lack of credit of real money. The bigger picture, many times over, manyfold over, I would think, is the actual payment that we're giving. And that's, that's the, I'm trying to give my, my end of the call.
And see if we abate back, it sort of goes against the taxes. But if I'm abating it back, I really need to take it against the evidence-based funding. And when we show our model, and that's why we purposely have taken and split out evidence-based funding from the property tax relief grant, because we want to show the two. But that's not what I'm seeing. And that's, like I said, they're just putting it into one account.
The very fact that we're eligible for this is because we are one of the most well-off districts in the state. And I believe we, our biggest district in the state has to be debt-free.
Yes, we are one of the rare districts that are debt-free. That is true. We will only be for a period of time, but yes, at this point in time, we are debt-free.
And I just wanted to re-surface that fact because I think it's important context for us to understand, not to say, oh, that's a bit lackadaisical, but to indicate, look, we have no debt as an institution and has been that for two years now. Right? And that's, that gives us options, I guess is what I'm saying.
I don't feel that we've given any.
So show the motion or what?
No, I, I, don't look at me because I'm still, I'm struggling.
In terms of the timeline?
Yeah.
If they continue the discussion at the 21st board meeting, will you still have time to?
What it could do, what it could do is I could bring options. I could bring an option to show that this is what, this is where we would be if we have, if we do a property tax or an abatement for our taxes. I could do that, show, I could show it in the five-year projection. But I know we have it, we did a bunch of scenarios, so.
And so in terms of the options, that would also be options for recommendations for the levy.
Correct.
And the levy has to be posted.
Yeah.
We have to get it up next year.
Yeah, so, yes, if we could do that, and I think that it would be helpful to have the perspective of Ralph and the kind of legislative pulse. And I, I do understand it clicking in for me, the dilemma with how this, those funds from the state, where they place them, that seems skewed.
Because the other thing I think we have to figure out, like the next time we're presenting the evidence-based funding plan. And part of that means at a certain point in time, you have to show the state how you've taken the money they've given you and use it for student achievement. And if that doesn't happen, so that's one of the reasons we have to figure out if you abate, like are you still being held accountable for those dollars as it relates to student achievement?
But, yeah, this is, we can't do it all, right? But the circular part there for me is that it does go back to where we stand now and what our goals are in terms of our expenses and having to take that real look. And are we, by not using the property tax relief grant, even though it has gone into a bucket that we, I didn't know it was going to go into the evidence-based funding bucket. But that doesn't change, the state report card, it doesn't change the fact that what our fund balance is or how we look at what, you know, how we're using our money. And, you know, I think Tom made the point earlier of what we, we knew we were going to be debt-free and yet that money feels like it just was found money as opposed to budgeted in some respects. And I think the board has, you know, how we have kind of lighted that discussion.
As I sit here and look at the data that was presented, which is, you know, we've talked a lot about balanced budget, right? But what, what's been shown is a budget that's been balanced by not changing the expense side, but changing the revenue side. And, and a lot of, you know, different pieces, and as the key driver, there's been, there's been efforts to change it. I'm not diminishing that, in saying there's been nothing, but the action has really been on the revenue side. And that, 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 there's an end to that. And we need to address the other side.
If I may ask, my thought, Cindy, is, because you had mentioned to bring options to us, and I think there's a big difference between two and three options in terms of what those might be. So I don't know if you need direction from us on how many options. I have over three personally.
Seven, five.
I have over three. I think that's helpful.
Two.
We recently morphed a couple of options into a, into three on a different issue. And so I, I'm thinking three based on all the Stu that we threw at you, the statistical Stu, that might be three levels that come to mind.
Four levels.
Well, that's a good question.
Well, I mean, it is the question.
Well, one way, I think one is to have, you know, an abatement of some, sum of money. I'm not sure if we, I'm totally lost as to how much that might be. So we can maybe hash that out here of what that, where we take the range of what an abatement would be, would be one scenario. And one would be not to have an abatement. And then maybe a third have to do with perhaps not taking all of the TIF. And this is in my world, I'm the only one on the board, but those three problems in my mind, others could clean it up if, if they want to.
So when you say the abatement, that was the 1.7 we're talking about? Because I'm assuming you would only want to abate back whatever we have received to date and then address it again next year.
That's an excellent leading question. That sounds right to me.
That was what I was assuming, not what we, because the first year was the pre-year.
Right, right, received, okay.
I mean, I guess I agree with three scenarios. One is what you proposed as a recommendation. One is abating back 1.7 and keeping the CPI at 1.9 or whatever. And the third is either the abatement plus taking away the 1.9 or the 1.9 instead of the abatement. You know, I, I guess I could go with the third one being that we, we take the 1.7, we take the full amount of, we don't abate, but we.
Freeze.
Freeze the levy. We don't take the 1.9.
We don't take the CPI.
Those being the three options. I'm sorry, I'm not being very clear, but I think we've got it. But in all of those, what about on the expense side? I, I want to see the curve of holding expenses at 1.9% or to whatever you determine the long-term CPI is.
Okay.
And in a perfect world, I'd love to see the five-year forecast that matches whatever we, whatever we choose as a scenario. I don't know how, I don't know if that's accomplishable. So I might have to make this decision without full clarity of the five-year forecast in the answer from my perspective.
We will, because, because contracts alone are higher than a CPI.
Right.
So it's hard to do that.
So on the expense side, I wanted to see the, the 2% number and see what implications that has as, as two boundary conditions. Essentially, one boundary condition is what you, what you put. The second boundary condition is a constant 1.9%. And whatever falls out of that in terms of impacts that has.
Okay.
And those are the two expense things. And then you, we propose one of these three options and I get to see that curve in the middle, right?
Right.
The expense curve, the revenue curve that matches that will fall in between those two options. But it will fall closer to the original recommendation, right? I mean, what we're proposing is not a large enough reduction in expenses, but it's a, I have to propose something for the conversation and options. Do you want to propose a more severe?
No, please. I think, I think that three is good in those three. And I think the conversations that happen after that have to do with somehow, so how do we live within those boundaries with the direction that you all have already started taking in terms of looking at, you know, examining the control.
And I think too, what we have to do is, some of them, we have to wait for the contracts to drop off in those years. And that's where the harder years are for us. I know we keep going back to that, but that is truly, that's still on our books right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't get to move now.